Good evening and welcome to the June 25 regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. I would ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And first order of business, Secretary McFarland, will you please take attendance?
Yes. President Singer.
Here.
Vice President Branstad.
Here.
Treasurer Frazee.
Here.
Member Baker. Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Friddell.
Here.
We have six members present.
Great, thank you. All right, moving into item two, we have the consent agenda. We have three items. Item 2.1 is approval of the minutes from June 11 regular meeting. Item 2.2 is staff members that have announced their resignation. And item 2.3 is the approval of payment of the school system's bills for the month of May 2018 as listed in the checked register. Would anyone like any of those items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will take --
A motion.
I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Support?
Moved by Mary and supported by Scott. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, items 2.1 to 2.3, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the consent agenda passes. Moving into item three, we have the Board of Education Matters and item 3.1 is for action. We have the final budget amendment. Mr. Cooper?
Good evening. I'll draw your attention to the screen. Not very many slides, so hang in there, but we have really, if I could remind you, two things that we have to do this evening. We've gone through our workshop. We did our proposed budget, excuse me, 1819 budget to the board and our public hearing was on June 11. And tonight, we need board action. And the first thing we're looking at is the final budget amendment for 1718. And I'll go over that in just a second. And then we'll ask you to approve the 201819 budget. It always works this way, and as you know, even when we give you the final estimate on 1718, once the audit comes in, that will be the definitive final one. And again, we try to get close, but there's a lot of variance out there where people do or don't spend money that they've reserved aside, so. Okay, so what you're looking at here, the three columns takes you back through 1718. So the very first column, far to the left, that's where we started back in June of 2017. That's how much we thought we'd have in revenue expenditures, our excess variance, and our unrestricted fund balance, and what percent that was. The middle column is March. That's when we revised it. If you remember, we come in and in March, we revised the budget and changed some things. And you can see that the revenues had changed and so had the expenditures. That's, by the way, that middle column is the column we get to work off when we're developing the 1819 budget. We don't have this last column, which is your final amended part, until after that budget's already come to the board, because we're still working on both budgets at the same time. What you'll see, if you look in that last column, the difference between the March and the June estimate, you'll see the revenues up slightly. I think it's about $60,000. That's not much change. That's usually just a slight change from one of the grant funds out of the state. And you'll see expenditures down about $440,000. Again, not a great amount for the size of the budget, but that has everything to do with like purchase services and instructions that didn't get done. And so that might be, you know, something they had planned to do but didn't do. Or it could be, I know, for example, I was looking at Special Ed Para Pros, the budget for that for their salaries came in a little less. So when you see those expenditures change, it's really, that's our variance. You've just seen it ahead of time and it's items that since March, the different budget groups are not able to spend. You'll see we're looking at excess revenue about 2.5 million. If we get a 1% variance on top of that, even though historically it's two to three, it does jump around. So we usually use one to kind of predict where we'll be. And you'll see that our surplus looks like be $3.3 million. Unrestricted, remember, we always talk about this, there's a fund balance, but in our fund balance, we do have gifts that have been given to us that are restricted. And so I tried to show you the unrestricted part that's back there. And you'll see that that looks to be about, on June 30, 15.6 million, which is about 19.5% of the expenditures. I would say just a couple of things here as you look at the differences going forward. The biggest difference always, especially when you're looking at the fund balances, we are actually starting one budget before we know the ending fund balance of the previous years. So really, the biggest jump usually happens between that first June budget and the March adoption, because that's when we actually know where we're starting from.
Mm-hmm.
And in this case, if you were to go back and look, the fund balance started about $2 million higher than we ever thought it was going to start when we put the budget together. So that's one of the adjustments you see. That's more in the fund balance part. You'll see the expenditures, of course, and revenues fluctuate depending on, again, as we take more money in, a lot of that comes from grants. So we have equivalent expenditures going out at the same time. So that's going to be the final amended budget. There was a copy in your board packet of the budget itself and the most recent breakdown or summary of expenditures. And that would take a roll call vote for you to approve the final amended budget for 201718.
Okay, I'll accept a motion for item 2.1.
I move we accept the amended 201718 final budget amendment.
We're --
Moved by Angela, support by Patrick. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Is that right, Bob?
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Okay. President Singer.
Aye.
Vice President Branstad.
Aye.
Treasurer Frazee.
Aye.
Member Baker is not here. Member Blasey.
Aye.
Member Friddell.
Aye.
I also vote yes.
We have six yes votes.
Great, thank you. And that is unanimous for the approval of item 3.1. Moving into item 3.2 for action, we have the approval of the 201819 general operating budget.
I'll change one more slide there and turn it over to Mike. That is just a summary of what we presented the last time.
And so with that summary, if you recall, we are asking you to approve a budget that has revenue over expenses again, probably not as high as we did this year. But we are expecting a slight student decline in enrollment. And the raising of the fund balance will assist us quite a bit with increasing payroll. We are at all time low at our payroll, especially with staff turnover we've had the last three or four years. And so you're at the low side of that payroll and it will only go up from there. We also know that we need to continue to do capital improvements and capital purchases as well. So Bob did a great detailed job of explaining this budget to you. And again, the process, as you know, is this is an estimated budget with student count not known, some grand dollars not known, and it'll be adjusted as we go. So we are looking for approval and we would also recommend a roll call vote on this.
Okay. And I would entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the 201819 general operating budget. Support.
Moved by Angela, supported by Mary, and we're open for discussion. Well, you did a thorough job a couple of weeks ago with the budget and we asked questions there. And I feel we got all our questions answered and appreciate all your hard work. We'll go into a roll call vote for this.
Okay. President Singer.
Aye.
Vice President Branstad.
Aye.
Treasurer Frazee.
Aye.
Member Blasey.
Aye.
Member Friddell.
Aye.
I also vote yes, and we'll note that member Baker is absent.
Great, thank you. Moving into item 3.3 is workers' compensation insurance. Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, this is also the time of year, if you remember, a year ago, we bid out insurance, workman's comp. Until that time, we had been self-insured. So we are recommending that we renew with Bone &amp; Bailey Insurance of Midland, Michigan. The cost renewal amount is $80,914. That is roughly $8,500 cheaper. If you know much about the workman's comp, it's then based on the actual group experiences. So the different employee groups and how that comes in will affect that workman's comp. When you have good years, good things happen. And when the other way goes, then it goes up a little bit. And I included their bid summary in your board packet there. So it's the same company we went with last year after bidding that out for the first time.
Okay, great, thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move we approve item 3.3, the workers' compensation insurance policy with Bone &amp; Bailey. Support.
Moved by Scott, supported by Patrick, and we're open for discussion.
I think they've done a great job for us, especially working with our staff. I understand they help us out, kind of hold our hand through the entire process, when and if there is a claim. And it's really nice to see the premium drop by $8,500 from one year to the next. So hopefully, we continue that trend and everybody stays healthy and no comp claims.
Yep. Yeah, a lot of work went into it last year when we were debating switching.
Yep.
Okay, very good. We do not need a roll call vote for this, correct? Okay. All in favor of approving workers' compensation insurance, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it's unanimous. Okay, we're moving into item 3.4, which is the Midland Community Stadium soil stabilization. Mr. Sherrill?
As you are aware, we've discovered a few years back some issues at the stadium and the grandstands. It appears that the cracking of the concrete through the years has allowed water infiltration and washing out the soil underneath. We saw a lot of soil rising up and coming through. And so there's a lot of hollow spots in there. They are recommending that we inject the grout type material that will level it, fill it, hold it. I think they tell us about five years, maybe seven years, that would be a fix. And then we probably are looking at replacement of that. We had this ready for you a month ago, and then with the legislative change on prevailing wage, a few districts were caught in a gray area where the bids had already been submitted under the old legislation but not accepted under the new legislation. So we took that back per the legal opinion, worked with the three bidders that we had and having them adjust their bids to come in line with the prevailing wage. The low bidder remained the low bidder. And so we are recommending hardman construction of Luddington at $183,000 to stabilize the stands there. Kind of a specialty, as you can imagine, trade. And so we were lucky to really to get three bids. And so we were pretty happy with that. Looking for approval.
Great, thank you. And I will entertain a motion for item 3.4, for hardman construction of Luddington, Michigan, for the bid of $183,000.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Scott, supported by Angela, and we're open for discussion.
Will this happen this summer still?
Yes. Very quick, I think they actually wanted to get in there right away.
They would like, they would like to get in there right away. They'll have access, if anyone's noticed, East Lawn there is going to get tore up here pretty quick.
I saw that, yeah.
And so we'll still have access to all our parking lots. It's just not going to be a through road to go through on. So they would like to get going on it as soon as possible.
Any warranty on the product? I know you said five to six years, but did they guarantee anything on that?
I don't recall discussing that.
I don't recall that being the guarantee. I mean, other than talking with how long it typically lasts. I don't think any of the three bidders that I remember.
I think there's some kind of workman's comp in the material, but I don't know. Do you remember FF Oakman? I don't remember.
I don't remember either.
No, I don't. This is a short-term fix to give us a little more time.
Yeah.
So we can come up with a long-term plan.
I don't know that we'll go the full five to seven, but we certainly, this stabilizes and gives us some time to look at the whole stadium. I think we all would like to do more than what was originally designed for that stadium if possible as well, so.
Okay, then.
Were there any qualifications at all? I mean, anything obvious on their proposals? Anything that varied from what we asked?
Yeah, the low bidder is using a alternative material but still meets spec and approval from the architect or engineer. Yes.
Okay. Did they give any kind of information or knowledge to us? I know they want to get in there right away. I imagine the size of the equipment is going to do some pretty good damage that we have. Do we have to subcontract that or we self-perform to fix all of the ruts and grooves and re-seeding and grading or anything? Because I imagine this is like pumper trucks, kind of, to inject the grout material in there, which is going to be a little bit of a mess.
It is part of the, I think you would call it in your profession, performance, but it is expected with our performance to clean up after themselves, yes.
Okay. But we'll probably have to grade and seed and restore that kind of stuff to?
It's probably a question I didn't ask there.
I don't think so. I think when we were talking about that, it should be left close as to as-is, is what I was going to use the terms. That would be something that, of course, we have to inspect their work when they're finished too, to make sure it's left in that condition. It was my understanding that that would be taken care of as part of it.
Okay, great. I'm done.
Any other questions? No more questions?
Uh-uh.
Okay. We will take a vote on item 3.4, the soil stabilization then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the ayes have it. Moving in for, to item 3.5, Project Lead the Way sixth grade Chromebook purchases. Are you going to take this or?
Sure, we do have Dave here, so we always have Dave when we come to technology to support us on these questions. But the middle school, when we did their one-to-one, and they went with laptops. And so, as you know, we've gone to Chrome. Chromes are easier to control when they go home for safety. So right now, the middle school laptops stay at the building, a little bit of an issue for some of the parents. And so when our Project Lead the Way requires the preferred device would be the Windows laptop platform. And so we are going to purchase Chromebooks through the STEM, technically for Project Lead the Way, but we're going to place them at sixth grade and move the laptops to support Project Lead the Way. The laptops being older will not be used every single day as the Chromes would be as well. And so that'll start our transition into middle school to Chromebooks each year. We'll begin to add a grade level and then we'll be Chrome all the way across the district as well. So you have that recommendation at $167,400,000 to purchase those computer, those devices.
Great, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for item 3.5.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mary, supported by Angela, and it's open for discussion.
Is anyone else amazed we could buy computers for $279?
I know there's a lot of sixth graders that'll be excited to be able to take their Chromebooks home.
Yep. A lot of parents too, yep.
And kids are used to that at the, being in fifth grade.
Right, it's giving them the progression from elementary school.
I just had one question. I know that some of the Project Lead the Way, they still needed to have the iPads to run some of the programs. Is that still going to be true?
So that's at the, and Brian was the expert here, but I believe that's at the lowest level in the elementaries and we still have those going for a while.
Yeah, we're going to have a hybrid of devices for a while operating. As far as I know, and Dave follows this religiously, we are still operating some of the VEX programming on our iPads at the lower levels, and we're cart-based to be able to make that happen. We also are purchasing Android tablets as well through some of the STEM grants that was below what our threshold was for board approval for some of our upper-level courses as well, too. We have heard the rumor that it's all going to move to the Chrome platform, which would be preferable. But right now, there are still some of the courses that require just a touch more horsepower in their devices, which is why we're going to be hybrid-ing for a while. But Dave and his team are great about following that and working with Project Lead the Way. But I think for at least another year, maybe two, we're going to have a hybrid of devices to be able to support with our ultimate goal of Project Lead the Way moving over to all Chrome devices by the time we're fully vested.
I like the idea that those sixth graders are going to still have that computer.
Same platform, yeah. That's kind of how we chose that, you know, versus to going to the eighth grade.
It's exciting, yep. Very good. If there's no more questions, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving item 3.5 for the Project Lead the Way sixth grade Chromebook purchase. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And it passes unanimous. Moving into item four, we have request to address the board. And since we have nobody in the audience, I believe we'll be able to move right into item five. Item five is curriculum instruction and assessment. 5.1 is for information, textbooks.
Sure. Before you this evening, you have five different novels, four of them for Spanish 1 and 2, and one of them for French 1 and 2. And those are before you tonight just for the informational period. They'll be outside of my office for review for the next period in between our board meetings. And the paperwork is there as well, too. These are specialized novels. These are written in native language. And so forgive me for not pronouncing them for you this evening. I'll defer to our curriculum specialist, Scott Cochran, if you're really looking for intricate details, as he has read translated versions of those to make sure that content is appropriate and applicable for the course as well, too. So this is tonight simply for information, and we'll come back to the July board meeting for official approval of those four new novels for our Spanish 1 and 2 and French 1 and 2 courses.
Great, thanks, Brian. I'll entertain a motion.
This is just for information.
Oh, this is information, sorry.
Yep.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Are the translated versions available for us to read?
Yeah, Scott can get those for you.
Good question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Moving into item six, 6.1, for information again, our gifts.
We have 10 gifts tonight at the very last board meeting of the last fiscal year here, so it's very nice, $10,780.09. They range from the Kiwanis giving some money, Boosters Clubs from both Northeast and Jefferson. You'll notice somebody has donated money, the food scholarships to help pay for balances at the end at Seibert. Robotic team contributions from parents and businesses, some from the Boosters Club. And then you'll notice there's at the very end there are three from the Midland Youth Action Council at the Midland Area Community Foundation. And those are ones that different buildings wrote for with that committee to get those. I do have one item, 6.2, for your action because of the size of that. There was a gift totaling $10,000 given for, or towards, I should say, because it does cost more than $10,000 to put in a new PA system. But they're gifting $10,000 for a new gold gym PA system at HH Dow, and that's from the Boosters Club out there. But that does require your action because of the size of the gift.
Great. I'll entertain a motion for item 6.2.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Mary, supported by Angela, too.
Finally.
So let's hear some discussion then.
Yeah, it was so needed.
So needed. So needed. We ate places in that gym, you could not hear a dog on things.
Exactly.
So it's great.
Okay, all in favor of approving item 6.2? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And a big thank you to the Boosters at Dow High and all those who donated to the middle and public schools. We have item 7.1 for information. We have letters to the Board of Education. Item eight is scheduled activities for information following Board of Education meetings. And that moves us to item nine, which is study discussion sessions. So I will open that up to Angela.
All right. Well, given how it's only been two weeks, I don't have much to say. We do have one story. When we were talking about Project Lead the Way, I actually have a Kettering Co-op student who just finished her work term in my group. And she had to give some presentations at the end. And actually, I will now be her mentor for the rest of her college career. She just finished her freshman year. And she kept telling people that one of the reasons she went into engineering was from the Project Lead the Way that she had done in her high school.
Oh, wow.
And so, of course, probably a lot of other people may not have even known what that was, but it really stood out to me when she was doing her end-of-the-work-term presentation. So that is all I have tonight.
Good, thank you. You, Brad.
Just want to say thanks to Bob and Lori and everybody involved in all of our budgeting and forecasting and look forward to audited numbers and moving things forward. That's it. Thank you very much.
No comment for me.
Excellent.
Last week, I had the pleasure of going on an outreach trip out to Kentucky. And we had 46 students from Midland Public Schools that attended that and 13 different adults. And I was just so impressed by the students. And, you know, so often you hear folks might compare, you know, this generation to that generation. And I tell you what, these students were amazing and it was fun to work with them. They're such hard workers. And I always get a chance to talk about school and they talk about school. And just great comments and compliments to Midland Public Schools. But huge kudos to these students and all the parents that jump in to get involved and really mentor students along the way. So I counted up the developmental assets that they built in one week time, and it was 22. They worked on 22 developmental assets, so I was pretty excited about that. I wanted to touch base and talk to Kristen McDonald about before and after-school care just to see what we can do to make sure that we don't have parents that are left in a lurch with no before and after-school care. Also, just a shout-out for Youth Connection Magazine. We have a new magazine, so I hope our parents are taking a look at that. And that's all I have.
Just happy summer and take advantage of all the activities that our community provides for kids. Don't let them get bored. Library looks great. Grace H. Dow Library is just wonderful. And my grandson and I went there last week and it was just a blast. So it was good to be back in there. So take advantage of those summer programs. If kids aren't reading in the summer, they could actually fall behind. So we want to keep kids reading.
I don't have much tonight, just looking forward to watching the construction at Justin Hill and Seibert this summer as we go towards fall. I have a vested interest myself, so kind of curious to see how this all goes. I watch the trucks that go by my house every day, so should be fun.
That's awesome. Mike?
Couple of quick things. We have school safety set up for the fall, so we're going to be doing some training called ALICE. If you have heard that acronym before, it's Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, Evacuate. That'll be kind of a new process for us because we've been predominantly a shelter-in-place strategy. And so we're very excited that that also will be provided to us by Midland PD. And so we have them onboard and they're going to become our security providers and PD going forward. But Dave has also been able to get us up and going on Crisis Go, so it'll be very soon that we'll be introducing that to staff. Basically, Crisis Go will allow us to communicate in a much quicker fashion and go into lockdown with a consistent message going forward. It has a lot more pieces behind that, but that'll be the initial stuff of Crisis Go. I'd also like to point out Cindy Young is gone, so this is unusual for Cindy. And so we have Rita filling in. And so Rita's done a wonderful job getting tonight's meeting up and going for us. So thank you, Rita, on that piece of it. We did get a little bit of a construction update today. It has gone very well so far at Seibert, Justin Hill. So clean out was quick. The destruction, I guess you might say, of the buildings were very quick and they're already into about 75% of the asbestos has been removed, had been removed already. So we're ahead of schedule on those two buildings running forward. You know, it's a race, I guess, to get those teachers back into those buildings. So the report was, it's gone very well. Woodcrest's addition, it's pretty much closed in the envelope completely around it. And there'll be interior work and then that parking going in the back. And they expect that to be done like mid-July, so Woodcrest will be fully done as well. So we're moving pretty quick. We also know that Adams and the HVAC work for Dow High was being reviewed today by the engineers, so we're getting ready for that next year of work coming forward as well. So, and that's all I have.
Great, great meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Mary, supported by Angela. In favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.